All right. So a call is meeting of Rowan Boys from Regional School Committee to order. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before we go ahead, just want to highlight, you might know there's some differences about this week's meeting, some changes that we made. So we've been working with MASC, Tracy Novick, our representative there on ways to streamline and improve meetings. So that's why you see everything from what goes on in agenda documents to who's sitting at the table. So you see all the administration is actually sitting over there, ready to be called on if needed, but otherwise just the committee at the table. That was one recommendation we got to improve things. So that's why it might look a little different tonight. Nothing else going on there, but if anyone's here to make a public comment, remember, public comment, we can take only on things that are on the agenda. So if anyone is willing to make a public comment, please come up to the table, sign in, and make your comment, please.
Just have a question first.
Yeah, come up and sign in and...
I'm just gonna put a faculty.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Peter Doherty. I'm a teacher and coach here at Tohoto. I just have a question regarding a public comment, whether we should make a comment now or wait for the second public comment. It's regarding a business item regarding changes to the handbook specifically regarding middle school athletes and high school sports. Something that was just brought to our attention this morning. I was just wondering if we should comment now or wait before the business item, second public comment?
So the reason for the second public comment is for those people who can't get here at 5:00, if they still want to make a comment on a business item, and they can get here before that starts, that's what that's for. So if you want to make it now or wait, it's up to you.
Okay. Sure, I'll make a comment. I'm just here today to express my concern regarding the proposed language to change the handbook regarding middle school athletes participating in high school sports. This was an issue that came up back in August. There was a meeting on August 25th with administration and some coaches. At that time, we were told that there would be a working group, that's something we really like to do here, to further discuss any changes that might happen. We've notified today of a proposal to the school committee for a vote, and I think that caught a lot of us off guard, and we were not notified of those things. We're invited to be part in that discussion because I think there's some strong opinions on that. And I just wanted to express my concerns regarding that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me delete this on or...
I think you can turn it off once someone else comes up. Joe? Yeah? Anyone else? Yeah?
Just wanna try to mic back on.
Okay.
Dan Ashman, also a teacher and coach here at Tohoto for the past 12 years. Very disappointed to be here at this meeting tonight. I was very surprised to learn earlier today that there is potentially going to be a vote tonight regarding sports participation for middle school student athletes. At a meeting on August 25th, several other coaches and I were told that a committee would be formed and discussions would take place before moving forward with any changes to the current policy. That did not happen. We as coaches want to make it clear that none of us have been contacted for any input regarding the proposed changes to this handbook language. This is a vote that would impact not just middle school student athletes and teams, but also the junior varsity teams, varsity teams, and the programs as a whole. The proposed change to language and change in policy would be a detriment to the current and future Tohoto athletic program as a whole. We, the coaches, ask that the school committee not take any action regarding the proposed changes to the current portion of the athletic handbook and leave it as it is currently written. Should there be a necessary change, we ask that coaches be involved in the process as members of the committee, allowed to provide feedback and input throughout the process. And we would ask that those changes do not take effect until at the earliest the 2026, 2027 school year. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay, my name is Wenyi Ma. I'm a parent of a student. She's a sixth grader here. I was finally able to view the edits less than five hours before the meeting after I was the one who emailed the school committee superintendent and principal. I'm not sure if the edits would have ever been posted if I had not sent that email. And I would strongly request that the school committee and administration take pause before implementing something like this until a committee is formed and coaches get to weigh in before we have a lawsuit on our hands because we didn't provide equal opportunities for all students as this is being proposed during the school year, or we could potentially cripple our athletics programs, which could potentially result in more students leaving Tohoto altogether. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, everybody. Next is our consent agenda. Now please have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone.
Lori?
Second.
Beth? Anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone against it? All right, so that motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have Aaron, Director of Finance, for an update. Aaron is giving his update first because he is going over to Boylston to...
Aaron, don't you just come right here?
Yeah, come on over here. He's going over to Boylston to visit the select board. Casey, I don't know.
All righty. So, Aaron, if I can. So I know there was some received miscommunication the last time at Boylston, at a select board meeting, and whether we're invited or not. This time, we did receive an invitation to attend their select board meeting tonight. Unfortunately, it's the exact same time that we're having our school committee meeting. So Aaron is going to give his budget update. We head over to Boylston to represent administration as they discuss the MSBA move through process. So we just have to literally go from here over to Boylston's select board meeting. So Aaron, thank you.
Sure. All righty. So you have a couple items. Why don't we start with school committee memo budget? I won't share the details. You also have a closing report for fiscal 25. I won't go into the details of that. You're welcome to email me with questions or reach out to me with questions about specific line items. But this, you know, pretty much, this memo pretty much covers where we fell on the year. We finished the year spending a total of $24,605,928 and one cent. And I can promise that one cent was spent well. And one of the things that we have to do for our auditor is identify which sources our funds were coming from for this year. So one of the things we did in December, we've been sort of working backwards and trying to play some catch-up, is in December, the school committee approved a full budget. At that time, I was incredibly confident, I'd been watching the budget all along, that our revenue sources would meet our budgetary needs, and they did. So what I'd like to do for our auditor right now is to sort of back into what our intended revenue sources would have been. You may recall in our prior budget meetings, when we approved the fiscal '26 budget and when we will approve the '27 budget, all of these sources are identified in the budget. So the budget you approved and the budget you will approve for fiscal '27, unfortunately, because of the way things work, we've just had to back into it this year. So at this point, I'm just requesting that the school committee approve these specific line items as part of the revenue budget. These are our funding sources. And again, Megan, thank you for clarifying that the budget and finance meeting. I kind of talk and get a little wonky. And clarifying it as these are our funding sources as opposed to our spending, those are two separate kind of items is really important. I'm happy to answer your questions on other items. All of our reporting will be in on time. Our end of year report is in process. Our excess and deficiency is in process, and we're hoping to have that certified in a timely manner. Any questions?
Questions or comments right here?
So fewer funds...
I was asking maybe any...
So fewer funds will be taken out of the school choice.
Yes, yes. So we will, that, those funds will remain available for future use. And that's, that's really the goal. I sort of have a, I guess, a waterfall approach to funding. We always want to spend the money that's going to go away or that we're going to lose right away. So grants, even our assessments, we want to make sure we spend through those first. And then things that fall into our savings accounts, as it were, such as school choice, I'd rather put money there.
Essentially, none of the school choice is getting spent.
Correct. So we'll have that available for future years to help the budget. Yep.
Anybody else? All right, so Aaron, I think you have a recommendation down here that you read as a motion. Since you're gonna leave, why don't we get this one out of the way? This is a business item, I believe.
Yep.
Fund a close-up.
Yeah, a close-up. I just lost the document, sorry.
So the recommendation at the bottom is just that the school committee votes, I guess you'd be looking for a motion and vote to approve the budget in the total amount as outlined in this memo.
So I have a motion, please, to authorize the FY '25 operating budget by funding source provided above, a net total amount of $24,793,688, consistent with the school committee vote of December 10th, 2024. Beth?
Second.
Jess? Any further questions, comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It's a budget vote. Why don't we do a vote call vote here? How about that? Megan?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
All right, I'll ask one. Thank you very much. That motion passes.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's the only vote you have?
That's the only, only vote I need. The next memo you have is for capital priorities. This is a memo outlining, we will need to go to the town of Berlin by October 31st with our capital needs. So I need to complete their sort of worksheets. They don't typically mandate that we prioritize them, but I'm coming to the school committee ahead of time, sharing, this is, I've met with all of the principals, I've met with Dana Yella, how important are these, how crucial are these? And we've ranked the various items in order of priority for each school. So at Berlin Memorial, you'll see we've got 304,242, starting with the gym door, the phone system, student staff technology, repairing some rooftop units, and repairing craps in the walls. There are two caveats below. The roof replacement is being considered at the October special town meeting. We will probably, we would probably put that in as item three and renumber everything accordingly if we had to. We might, you know, three or four, we might play around with it. The other item that's been on the capital plan is mini splits. Dana Yella, to his credit, is working on a green communities grant that would largely fund this. So he's working directly with the town of Berlin to get this done. That would cover the cost if, you know, I think we're comfortable putting this off one year, given some of the other priorities. And if, if it doesn't happen, if somehow we don't get the grant, we just bring it around next year, back into the capital planning process.
Kristen and Dan have been working really hard
Yes.
on this grant, working together in the town of Berlin to get this over.
A lot of work on his part.
Oh, sorry, in Berlin. Sorry about that. Kristen has been working really hard with Berlin to really work on this grant. There's a lot of, a lot of work to be done in getting the money for this green grant. So I appreciate the work that Dan and Kristen have been doing in the town of Berlin.
Yep. Scrolling down to Boylston. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a question.
The phone system, but it's not on any of the other schools.
Yep.
Is that something you can upgrade, Jess?
Their phone system is much older.
Yeah.
We would very much like to unify the phone systems across the district. The biggest block in the way of doing that is going to be Berlin's phone system, which is, I believe, still an analog system. They have connection issues consistently. They have challenges. So if we could move them to a true voice-over IP system, we could get a lot of efficiencies. Plus, in the long run, we could start planning out that move to a consolidated phone system. Is that fair?
Cool.
Okay. We'll move on to Boylston. Boylston is starting with student staff building technology. You can see some Chromebooks, laptops, cameras. This is typically what we need every year. We'd love to roll this into student and staff and building technology. We'd love to roll into operations. We understand why it's in capital because it hasn't traditionally been part of the operating budget. It would be challenging to do so, but we're going to continually look at that, depending on where the budget sits. Playground rubber surface, this is a safety and accessibility issue. So over the mulch that we currently have, there are a lot of challenges with students or children or adults even in general who have mobility challenges, things like that, getting over that surface. A rubber challenge would remedy that significantly. It's longer lasting. It wouldn't involve annual re-mulching. And it's a pretty, they're getting pretty good, and they're a pretty clean, nice surface. Repaving the back parking slash play area, if you notice, the front was repaved this past year. We would like to do that. And if there's some feasibility, I know there was some talk of adding spaces when they did the, the front. We'd still like to look at adding spaces if that fits within any budget we set up. The next is bathroom updates. There are two bathrooms that are in really rough condition. I think the folks who walked the building saw that firsthand and understand that those really need some work. The sinks and the lavatories are into pretty solid disrepair. Early elementary play area, we're looking at this to create a little bit of fencing, just to block off. There's a small play area the preschools use. We'd like to block some of that off from, hey, car access and maybe kids running down that road. We have a lot of young kids who might do that. We have not had any significant incidents with that. We just like to prevent it before it happens. So that gets us to the total of 486. I'll pause for any questions there if anyone has any. Yes.
I thought for the rubber surface, we said that, or we had talked about, I don't know, it was the day that Jess, Mr. P was there, Rob, you were there. I thought we said that the bathrooms were probably more critical than that, but maybe there's something I missed. And the other question I had, does Berlin have rubber? So there's still mulch?
Yeah.
So the Boylston Education Collaborative has currently been raising money for new playground equipment as well.
Yep.
We have a pretty, pretty sizable amount right now. So that's something we're working on. I think we should work in conjunction on that. But I just, I wasn't sure of the...
Would, would the committee object to, or Rob, would you object while you're here to me swapping four and two?
I think the bathroom's pretty solid. They just, we got a lot of traction. A lot of people were talking about that playground surface.
I know.
So we just felt like, given kind of the politics and the hubbub, we'd like to try to push it up a little bit, but
Oh, yeah.
We're, I think I'd be amenable to, as we presented to the towns, swapping two and four.
When does it mean? So Berlin needs theirs by the end of this month. When is Boylston need? Berlin needs there, or Berlin needs this from you by the end of this month?
Yes, yes. Boylston's a little further out, yeah.
So Aaron, can we just, can we just wait and talk to Dan and Yella about this as well, too?
Yeah, we'll have that conversation.
Before we make that change from two to four, just make sure everyone, we talked to Rob and Megan, yeah, but I think facilities, we should give some input on that. I think there are priorities, whether we number one, two, three, and four, or whatever. Let's just make sure we have, please.
We'll have another meeting before Boylston adds there.
Yeah, exactly.
I think Boylston's like in the winter, right?
Yeah, they roll theirs into the total budget process. So there isn't, they don't have, Berlin has specific forms we fill out. Boylston, we just kind of share, this is what we need. It's a little different. And it's fine. Every, you know, every town's got a little bit different nuance. So Tohoto, Tohoto has not had much capital for a few years. The first item, student staff technology, has not been updated in, in three years. So this is going into year three without significant updates. Our one saving grace has been that Google has extended their lifespan for Chrome by a year or two. So we've managed to kick the can down the road, but our devices are getting really long in the tooth based on the way that we budget. You know, this is the real challenge, is also our budgeting and regional agreement. In another region, if Boylston had 10 extra Chromebooks, I could fire them up for Berlin. I could fire them up for Tohoto. But because of the way our system is, we can't really do that. So we need to budget for what we need. That's, that's a real challenge. So we've been limping along with what we have. We will be hard-pressed to be a one-to-one school if, if this continues. Auditorium lights and projector. The auditorium is used very heavily by the community. We have dance recital, we have town meetings, we have all sorts of events in there. Those lights, we're just talking the regular lights that provide lighting, as well as the projector. It has a very large sort of commercial-grade projector that needs to be replaced. We think we can do that for about $28,000. The telecommunications closet, the AC unit there is giving away. If that were to completely give away, we would have the potential of sort of burning out our telecom equipment if that would happen for an extended period. There are some lighting panels that need to be updated. If you've been to gym, you'll also know that the gym lighting controls don't work properly. We need to have those fixed, so that's there. Middle, I apologize, there's a typo in middle, and now that I'm looking at it, it feels silly. But we're going to continue asking to improve our middle school furniture. As I think we shared, the furniture that the middle school had is largely elementary school-sized and does not suit many eighth graders in particular, who are bigger than me in many cases. And I've sat in those chairs, and I feel pretty silly in them. We did get some furniture this past year. We got some donation from Fitchburg that was helpful, but we'd like to just continue that. We need to do an evaluation of the condition of the track. I think since I got here, people have been kind of questioning where that is in its lifespan and what needs to be done. We don't know, quite honestly. I'm not a track expert. We'd like to get someone in who can do an assessment of that track and just say, you know, where are we in the process? How many years does it have in life? Does it need to be replaced now, or can we wait a couple of years? The paging and intercom system is aging. We think of, I think in a lot of cases, we think of this building as the new building. It's 13 years old. There are things that are getting long in the tooth, and that's particularly technology items. It includes things like the paging intercom system and some of the other items on this list. Finally, additional parking. I know this has been a topic of a lot of conversation. You know, for our purposes, it doesn't, you know, fit in the top seven on this list, so we've got it at eighth. As I shared below, you know, we're happy to present requests to the towns at the committee's direction. So if, if there's something you see here, in particular, Tohoto has sort of the most capital needs, and that parking's a pretty heavy lift. So that is going to need to go to both towns. So Berlin's going to need to see that. We do have the potential for a $100,000 grant. We have some degree of confirmation that that grant is in, but we don't have, you know, any communication from, I think it's from the Department of Transportation. It was on earmark bill. I'm familiar with dealing with DESI earmarks. I've not dealt with Department of Transportation earmarks. I'm sure we'll be notified at some point that we're eligible for funds and what the process looks like. So I'm pretty confident we'll have that money, but I don't want to include it until we know it's in the bank.
So just to clarify on that, Aaron, thanks. That money has not reached any of us yet in terms of the communities and the towns. There is an opportunity. I know that they did, they did some work with Chris from the town of Berlin. And I think we can push that money out if need be. I think it was 2028, maybe. I'm not sure the exact date. Maybe right around there that the money can still be available to us, but we have not received, I know we've asked multiple times, people have asked us, like, where is that $100,000 that we've been kept? But we have not received that into our budget, into our community.
Any, any comments? Does the school committee, would the school committee like us to act differently on Tohoto? Again, I know the parking's been kind of up and down. We've got some design work already that was volunteered, which is fantastic. You know, just based on, you know, our student needs and our school needs, we feel like the other items come ahead.
Jess, you look like you want to say something.
There's a lot of needs at Tohoto, and they're not been addressed for a while.
Yeah, they've been kicked down the road so much that the auditorium doesn't seem like a priority, but it needs to get done. I witnessed the gym lights, an issue. One sad middle school kid at the dance when they couldn't figure out how to get the lights off.
This is actually less than it was originally in the budget, in previous budgets. It was like closer to $100,000. So I don't know what you guys did to trim that down or found a way to fix it instead of buying new or something like that. But I think it's very reasonable. Obviously, the parking is a big question mark, but other than that, it's, we would hope to...
We've done a lot of pencil sharpening. I mean, I believe there was a number in there for the track that was in the hundreds of thousands at one point. Some of the, the middle school furniture was very high originally. The donation from Fitchburg went a long way. Plus, the ability for Lisa to buy about $30,000 last, this past year, has collectively at least put a big enough dent in that. Some of the auditorium items, as Joe's kind of sharpened his pencil and really kind of worked with some people, that number has come down significantly as well.
And these are also numbers that we have right now, right? So the longer we wait, right, things are changing in our district, in our community, in our country, right? So these prices are off this flexibility that we need to be paying attention to as well. So I know we have a number there, but I want us to be clear that that number could be fluctuating, right, depending on what things are going to be changing at price.
Absolutely. Thank you for finding the Fitchburg donations, and I hope you and Dan went with a truck and picked it up. So thank you.
It was a fun day. We pulled a U-Haul truck and ran up to Fitchburg and loaded chairs and desks. It's not my usual day's work, but I like the change-up. It's good.
Creative. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? The only thing I'd draw out there, Aaron, regarding the auditorium, is we're suggesting that we're doing that for frequent community use. That kind of goes hand-in-hand with the parking situation. Whenever there's a community event, there's not enough parking,
sure.
And that creates safety issues on the highway. So just keep that in mind.
So we can just kill both of them and fix everything?
Sure.
Okay. Take both of them up.
Also, one other thing. So if we're doing paving at BES, it might be worth it, like in conversations down the road, to ask about if there's a deal, if we're doing both at once, and take that into consideration as to whether or not this goes into the budget this year.
Yep. The work Boylston did this past year, I know, was on sort of a pre-pid contract that Boylston did. I would honestly reach out to, if we, if this becomes realistic, I would reach out to Boylston and say, if you're going to rebid paving work this next year, can we talk about this? Is that not...
But just for clarity, though, we can't use Blacktop at Tohoto.
No, no, it'd be a different sort.
It would have to be a different thing.
Completely, completely.
Right, right. But a lot of paving companies will do different services. We'd add that surface type to their bid.
Yeah.
There is a whole, as people that sat in that meeting, like...
It'd be a different process.
Yeah, completely. There's...
And specialized. It might be only like a couple companies in the state that might do it. Yeah, I don't know anything.
Yeah. And this size and type is, quite honestly, out of my wheelhouse. It might be out of Dan's wheelhouse. I'd love to be able to sort of share resources as well because we would have to be paying someone to help us with that. If the town's already either doing it themselves, and they've got a format, they've got a template, it's just boom, 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 done, rather than us kind of recreating the wheel. So again, we haven't really broached that yet, but you know, if April's watching, sorry, April, we'll talk to you later.
Yes. And we're working with the reservoir people, right, and all that company?
DCR, yeah.
Tell me again who this is.
DCR.
DCR, thank you, to every step we're doing. With any, any changes we're making in the parking lot, as Lisa, our principal, has been involved in those conversations.
Okay.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Last item is the budget calendar. Last item is the budget calendar, timeline, whatever we're calling it. Yep, this is for information only, I'd be happy to take feedback. I'm not asking you to make a decision or vote on this right now. But this follows a timeline that that I think Megan sent to me that had been used in the past. That timeline had really specific dates on it. I have removed some of those dates, so this is just an ongoing, every single year we can reuse this. And it's in order by month and within each month, each item is in chronological order. At present, we're pretty well, we are pretty well to to schedule right now. So we've shared budget sheets with administrators, they're looking at them now. We're having some back and forth, we've prioritized capital needs, as you saw. At some point, principals and administrators will return those budget sheets, will submit our capital requests to Berlin. And, you know, our E and D will be submitted by October 31st. You know, we may, we may stretch a week or two beyond that, but we will be well within budget. That's, you know, it's just that that fiscal '24 thing continuing to carry over. But now that, now that we're, we've got everything pretty well dialed in for fiscal '25, we shouldn't have a problem getting that in. I won't go into everything else, but I'm happy to get feedback from school committee members at any point on where things fall and where they think things should fall. If there's anything I've missed, let me know and we'll go from there. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any last questions, Aaron? I said, any last question for Aaron?
Thank you so much. Yep, have a great day and I'm going to get off to Boylston. Yep. Not a problem.
Maybe I'll see you over. Great, so first of all, I want to thank the school committee for the work they did with Tracy, right? And reorganization and moving forward in learning, right? We as educators are constantly learning and school committee went through some great training and that's why I see a reorganization, like Mike said earlier. I also want to just point out Nathan Wheeler, some people might be, you know, wondering in the vast multiple times from our school committee, who's the gentleman that's sitting over there, Nathan, sorry to call out. Nathan is one of our teachers, math teachers at our, at our high school, but also Nathan is, we're actually saying he's going to the PALS program, right? So he's learning to become an administrator, right? And so we're always looking to create a bench, so he does some of that work as attending school meetings as well too. So we welcome Nathan joining us and we're always looking to create a bench for our administration as well too. So I know people have asked me, who's that gentleman sitting over there? So I wanted to make sure I introduced him and Nathan, thank you and welcome to our school committees as well. So just a little brief update, so I'm going to ask at this time Julie Lee, could our athletic director could join us at the table for a minute? And I'm going to remove the average sign for you. Or you can sit right there, perfect, even better, wherever you feel comfortable. So Julie, I know you, you let me know earlier that she was going to be running a little late because she was at a game. So I appreciate you doing that, getting them on our priorities, being with our kids and attending games. You did miss the opportunity, there was some public comment made earlier that, I'm sorry you weren't able to hear, but we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into the student handbook and the athletic piece of that as well too. But I've asked at this time if Julie Lee could give us a quick update on our field project right now. And I know some great things are happening with that and her and Dan and Yala have been overseeing that. So I want to just end with, you know, obviously working with Lisa and Laura, but if you could give us an update of what's taking place with the field.
Okay, so this is good, we just spoke with Nate today. So Nate Miller is the contractor that did the field, he was boots on the ground out there, working with Mike High Tower and he said, this is perfect timing, he sent me a really great update. So the field is in good shape, he was up there today to adjust the irrigation and the rain, with the rain and the cooler temps. He pulled down some of the sod to check for rooting and it's already starting to grab onto the soil, which is great. We wanted that transplanted grass to start sending roots down and getting happy in its new home, which it is. Hopefully, we're done with the 80 degree temps like we had early last week when we dry out from the rain these past few days. We go keep an eye, keep the irrigation off until Thursday or Friday to let those roots die down and really start searching for water. We can do that now that the temps are cooler, we're using the ADs, it's a little bit harder, we just have to keep hydrating. Last week, they sly seeded the areas that did not get sodded and they also added some of the loam to the low areas around the team benches and the corner marks. All in all, they're really satisfied with the condition of the fields, which is great. They will also continue to monitor the grow areas. They are planning on aerating top dressing later in November when they have more root strength and there is another round of fertilizer going out before the end of October. And if anyone's been on the fields, you may have seen this little robotic mower that's out there that is set up to mow the surface every day. This method of mowing allows for a greater quality of cut and also doesn't put heavy equipment on the new sod while it's starting to get established in its home. Everything seems to be going well from Nathan's perspective and anything that we need, just to give him a call. That's it.
Questions for Julie and all about that? When are you going to play?
We'll be playing well for spring, the track can go on it. It's, you know, it's preference by the school. We could play on the end of October, is it ideal? No. Could you get lacrosse up there in the spring? Yes, not ideal, but we'll be playing well for our soccer kids next fall.
You know, I can't thank Julie enough for coordinating the teams and utilizing other fields during practices and games. That is a feat amongst itself, so I appreciate you doing that as our athletic director. I also appreciate the games at Hillside, right? I get to look out the window and go down and see some of those games as opposed to this last week's football game where we're absolutely freezing out there, but really is a coordination effort that you've done. So I thank you for for doing that. So it's been great work and the field is looking like it's in really good shape. And I know that was quite a conversation we had as school committee, but we really are moving forward in a great direction. So I thank everybody for that. There are some people that did some great donations to us and when this is all done and over, we're going to talk to school committee about how do you want to, you know, recognize those donations that people have made and what's the best way to do it, in terms of signage or whatever? But we'll talk to you about that later on when, when the project is completely done as well too.
Great.
Thanks Julie, I appreciate it, we'll be seeing you shuttle again as well too. So next I'm going to ask Renee if she could join us as well too. So we had our first strategic planning committee meeting this past Wednesday, October 8th. Really was a great group of people that were assembled to do some great work for our school district. We are in need, as I think you've heard me say from the very first school committee meeting I had here, we need a strategic plan. Renee is going to join us, give us a little update about what took place this past week and what's taking place even as we speak today and what's happening as well too, Renee?
Sure, so as Al said, last week, we held our first full committee meeting on October 8th and it was facilitated by Pam Gould, who came to speak to you last spring. It was really great. Everybody was really collaborative, Lisa was, was there, we had members of the community, we had teachers, we had administrators. We also have a good selection of parents at different levels and we have a couple of students who are on the committee but had a game, so they'll be in the November meeting, so that'll be nice. But it was really, we actually, you know, got a, got a kind of a, like, you know, hey, how do you get this good group together, right? So they were really supportive of, and it was just, it was just by the willingness of the community. So we were really grateful for that. So that, that beginning work is really just starting to take a look at what our mission statement is at this time. Do we want to alter any of that mission statement? It doesn't look like it has been looked at for many, many years. You know, and then taking a look at, they call them kind of like the big rocks, like what are our big rocks that we want to identify to move our district forward? And it's not this, just this committee moving it forward, it's the focus groups and it's the surveys. So this week starts a series of focus groups. We had one this afternoon that I thought went really well with our administration team, which was great. We have one that will be going on in about, you know, a little less than an hour with some of the elected officials from FinCom and the select courts from both towns coming in to give their, you know, really it's identifying what our strengths, you know, what our individual strengths that we think in our focus group, right? And it's okay to disagree, that's the beautiful part of this, right? What our, our challenges are and what our opportunities are. And we will continue on with additional focus groups next week with staff from all of the schools. We'll have an opportunity for the middle high school students as well as the parents. So those invitations went out today. We were kind of told to hold, had it be a little more than a week, but the more kind of flooding of information too fast, we were kind of asked to put our invitations no more than like a week and a half out. So those went out to parents today and to staff today. I know school committee will have an opportunity as well to do, actually, something just got shared to me this afternoon that will be in like an electronic focus group that you can then choose to do as, you know, together in one of your meeting forums or however you want to choose to do that. So I think it's really going well, they're very excited about working with us and it's really, I feel really fortunate that you supported this project because we're having an outside, you know, resource coming in to support us. So it's not just what, you know, Renee and Al and Lisa and, you know, are saying, it's this outside community is coming in and they're guiding us and it's going to be what the community's direction is for, for the district. So I'm really excited about the process and just looking through some of the districts, I know that they had shared some of the plans when they came in, but Neshoba, on their website, has a great strategic plan that this Teaching Learning Alliance head led. That's a really close school district, also a regional district, that would be a great one that the community kind of wants to get an idea, you know, anybody that's, that's viewing what a strategic plan looks like and one that, you know, represents a community that's really close to us, that might be a nice one to take a look at just to kind of get that, that view, so. So if anyone has any questions about where we are.
I can't thank Renee enough for leading this work with us, it's been incredible work and Lisa as well too. We're going to be sending out a survey that we're working on right now that will be sent out to the entire community, right? Everyone in both the towns of Berlin and Boylston. Here's an opportunity to get feedback from all of our community, not just students, but families, but our community members as well too. This will help give, help give us a true pulse on our school district and community. Instead of the one-offs we hear about here or the one-offs we hear about there. We're really going to get feedback from, from absolutely everyone in our community about this taking place. So we'll be working on that survey, like I said, with the help of Lisa and Renee and we'll be getting that out to families as well too.
Yep, so we encourage if you can come in person to focus groups, but we're not supposed to announce the surveys, right? But, because we want the in-person feedback is always best, but just know that yes, if you can't make the focus groups, that those surveys will be coming out to all stakeholders, so.
It's really good work we're doing, really is.
When is the survey going out? I love, I love that you guys are doing it.
We're working on, so we, we're going to be sitting as a group and looking at, deciding which questions we're asking. They gave us a lot of questions, I think at the last look at it was like 149 and we're going to sort of narrow that down so we can get a pulse of people, but not have people be so overwhelmed that they don't want to answer the survey as well too. But to Renee's point, come to those focus groups so you can really give some honest feedback as well too.
The data meeting to look at all of the data, the in-person data, the survey meeting is the December meeting. So the surveys will, will need to go out prior to, thank you, okay, so this starts online? Yeah, just wondering, was this year or next year? Oh, yeah, no, because we want the whole strategic plan to be ready by the end of the spring, so. Okay.
Questions? Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Next I want to give you a little bit of a safety update, so I know that it's been a lot of conversations this last couple of weeks regarding safety and I know there's a tentative scheduled meeting for budget safety and facilities coming up soon, we're finalizing some dates. But I want people to know that, please know that this past year with the coordination of Rich Cameron, our safety liaison, the amount of improvements in our safety protocols has been incredible. And I know people are asking like, like, why are we sharing those out? So we don't share all of these protocols out with our community, because with these protocols we share out there. Unfortunately, there are some weaknesses that we have to recognize and work on and get better. And if we share out these weaknesses sometimes, I'm sorry to say, there are some people in this world that are looking for those weaknesses. So we certainly don't share all of our safety plans that are in place, but please know we're constantly looking at that. We at Central Office just had a full training that we went through two weeks ago with Rich Cameron, so we know all of our roles and responsibilities. So the work that we've done this year has been absolutely incredible and constantly looking at that. Our, our things that we look at is how do we make sure our schools are safe and how do we provide them a good education? So I, I know that, like I said, there's been a lot of conversation, but please know that this is something we're, we're constantly looking at. With that being said, I'm going to ask the chair in the school committee for November's 10th school committee meeting, for us to go into an executive session so that we can talk about our security and give updates, where Rich will be there as well as some of our chiefs and police to talk about some of our safety things that we have in place right now. And again, that will all be in executive session where we share that out as well too. But I really want to make sure people understood that constantly looking at that, looking at the way we can keep our kids safe every single day when they're coming to school as well as our adults as well too. So I wanted to make sure people were aware of that, so I'll be asking for that to be an agenda item in the November meeting as well. Lastly, I want to just let you know about MCAS update, last Thursday, October 9th, all MCAS data was sent home. In November, we'll be asking school committee, we're doing a full presentation to school committee on the data the results of those MCAS scores. I know that many of you heard from, from, I've heard many school committee members, okay, so now what do you want next? What are you looking for to make those improvements come? We did some nice growth in math, we still got a lot of work to do in ELA. So what we're working on as an admin team and what we're presenting to is, okay, here's our data, but these are our next steps to help show the growth, whether it be curriculum, whether it be technology, we'll be ready to present that for you in November.
Sorry to interrupt, could I just ask a question that relates to?
Yep.
I know at the elementary level, I don't know about Tohonto, but I know at the elementary level there was a reading coach role that we, I think, I don't, I don't remember if it was in the budget or not. I know that the role has been vacant.
Sure.
Just something to think about for maybe this coming budget.
Great.
It is in the budget, I'm not sure how we did it, I think maybe it might be in one school's budget, but not the other. Just something to think about, given that, what you just said about the scores.
Looking at our ELA scores, it's absolutely something we need, looking at that whole coaching model as well too for, and I know Joey was, Joey is here, right, for our math coach, but certainly up in ELA coaches as well too. Absolutely, not a question.
We're lucky to have Joey.
Yep. On a side note, the State Department of Education has still not organized the data for families yet. So I know that we've given you the hard data, if you're looking on the state website, we as superintendents are still waiting to get that information. They, they have a glitch there and so it's still not available for you to go online and really look at your student data compared to how we did as a district, how well your student did to other districts that are like ours. So that's still worked out, Renee and, and John, as well as principals are looking at. As soon as we get that information from the Power Education, that that website is up and going, we'll make sure that we'll keep you guys updated as well too. And that is my report from this, from the superintendent. All right, thanks, Al. Questions?
I think there's a lot of time that children are at home too, so I think time spent on reading and masks over the summer is also something to reflect on too.
So how do you use that?
Time spent kids reading versus on devices is something to ponder. I know when we went on a road trip with no internet out west, my son's reading dramatically improved for the next year. So it's also something to think about at home.
I agree, and I'd also say that, you know, when I'm looking, also UDL, right, Universal Design for Learning, right? As long as we have them, even maybe even reading on, on, on the Chromebooks as well too, any, any way they can get a chance for them to, to read. I just saw this whole thing done today, the amount of younger students that are on your TV that are having the words as rip across as, what's the?
Close caption.
Close caption, right, so that they're reading that as well too and how that's helping as well too. So they're not just listening, but they're actually actively reading that as well too. Just, there's a lot of pieces on both sides of that, so I appreciate that, but yeah, absolutely, I agree. Never, always have a kid, a student picking up and looking at media as well too. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, next up, our student liaison, Matt Dowd.
Yeah, wherever you want, Matt.
My name is Matt Dowd, I was here last year for the school committee meetings, some of you may remember me. I'm sort of here just to give the committee a little update on what's going on, student life at Tohonto, upcoming events, fun things we're planning. And I also like to break back what happens at the meetings to students at Tohonto, so everyone kind of knows what's going on with our school. So in terms of our student events recently, we've got some exciting stuff coming up. Probably the most exciting thing for me, and I might be a little biased, is our major of being in AP Literatures Cape Cod trip. So this is the last year this trip is going to be happening unfortunately. But we'll be spending this coming weekend, Saturday, Sunday and Monday in Cape Cod as probably, I know Mr. Corrigan is here, so maybe he can say something a little bit more than I can, because I haven't been there yet. But from what I hear, it's one of the best experiences we have and I'm very much looking forward to that as long as a lot of other students. Other things we got coming up, I know middle. Other things we got coming up, I know middle school has their spirit week. I believe that's next week. It's always a lot of fun walking around the school, seeing everybody dressed up and ready to go, especially on the Friday for the pep rally. And then we also have our high school's student council is planning our haunted hallway and bonfire. So that's scheduled for Thursday, October 30th, day before Halloween. Open for some good weather for the bonfire outside in the soccer field. The fire department has always had a blast with that. I always have a blast with that. I love sitting up by the bonfire. And our haunted hallway, you know, we take the math wing in our school and turn it into like a little haunted house kind of thing, which is always a blast and everyone has a lot of fun with that. So those are sort of our big events coming up. In the past, a few weeks ago now, we had our homecoming dance and high school spirit week, which was a great success. We've had our sports teams. All of our sports teams have been doing pretty good. We are hoping for another, you know, show up with our football team coming up in, I want to say it's December is the only one the, the big game is. So we're hoping to do that again. But other than that, I don't have too much else to say. I'm excited to be back. I'll be here this new school year. Fortunately, I'm a senior, so this will be my last year here, but I'm very excited, you know, for a good school year. I'm glad to be back here.
Matthew, how's the college hunting going?
I've got about two weeks to finish submitting all my applications, so it's very, it's really good, but it's, it's very hectic.
Do you know where your number one right now is yet? Have you thought about it?
I'm really liking Boston College, an assumption. Those are my top two choices right now. But yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of work going on there behind the scenes.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, good luck.
Having this role on your resume as you're applying to, to VC is certainly is, is a great thing to have on that. So thanks for doing this work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Matthew.
Jesse, you have an update for yourself, committee? Students access and technology?
Yeah. So our meeting went long last meeting, so we kind of skipped it. So the minutes from our September 5th meeting are in the drives. And so first I just wanted to thank Joe and admin for working on a safe solution for the middle school parent emailing situation. I think a lot of parents were very thankful to be able to email their kids now to coordinate logistics after school. Also, again, a thanks to Joe about and Al for getting bark on the district computers to put some safety various for the kids on their computers and what they can access. Certainly in the middle of summer, I heard that YouTube wasn't, or no, yeah, YouTube wasn't accessible on the computer. So for my daughter. Also, Securely was put in place as a tool for teachers, but I think training is still ongoing for them. And that will allow teachers to be able to see their students' computers and lock them into one program or whatever they would like, again, a tool to use if they want. And then eventually parents will be given some control, the computers at home when they're on home wifi as well. So. So thank you for that. Also at that meeting, we talked about the study act, which is the Safe Technology Use and Distraction Free Education Youth Act, or Massachusetts Legislation S 2581 was passed in the Senate and still in the House discussions. In January, the Massachusetts Attorney, Attorney General also put forth a cell phone and social media in schools toolkit. Actually presented to the superintendents at their meeting, winter meeting. And so that's some, that's a really great document that I encourage everyone to read. And so it lays out a pathway for schools to explore cell phone policies, which at this point it's likely going to come down from the state. And then also the second part of their three-part plan is a recommendation for community or parent nights to discuss different, different community norms as they put it within the toolkit. Last year, April of 24, BES fifth grade parents approached the principal and they organized a cybersecurity event with the Boyleson Police. Actually, no, that was, sorry, February of 25. And so, and then Al, I think arranged a cyberbullying with the attorney general, which unfortunately was not well attended. But hopefully that link could be sent out again.
Yes.
But to pursue that, you know, there's many things to discuss, but I did get ahold of the Brockton High School principal about that, their process going cell phone free. And granted, their high school is different than ours. But they talked about the process of parent nights and short introduction videos and talking points that it helped put the focus back on education. It increased interpersonal skills and conversation skills, which increased peer-to-peer and also student-to-teacher. They also saw a 50% drop in skipping classes because they were not texting to meet up in the bathroom. And then also increased performances, including AP passing scores by 12%. Also, MCAS participation increased in math. So just something that I think, since we may or may not be getting a policy from the state, I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to have a community night at some point, either led by us or the PTO or Beck or Link, discussing these community norms put forth in the toolkit. Especially since mental health is, is the crux of the conversation. And also AI was discussed at that meeting too, very briefly. And so it led to the discovery of obviously something that majority was aware, but DSS's Office of Educational Tech, which has a multi-year AI roadmap. So in August of 2024, they created a task force and the summer, this summer, they created an AI literacy guided, guidelines and policies. And so they plan to create workshops, trainings and tool recommendations for districts coming up for the 26, 27 year. So that was good information to have.
Thanks, Jess. I can just add one thing. Like if, so I'm thinking about your technology and the cell phones and that, the conversation. We're sending a survey out to all of our families, right? So maybe Lisa, one of the questions that we can make sure is, there's something along those lines. But I think we really need to get input from our families, right? What do mom and dads think? What do they think about whether allowing those students to have cell phones or not? I think here's an opportunity for us to maybe have a question resembling that on a, on a group.
Yeah. And again, like an open conversation, you know, there's everyone with different opinions. And, you know, there's anxious generation that's gotten a lot of publicity as the book. You know, certain norms that he puts forth, no smartphone until age 14, the wait until eighth is a huge movement. No social media until age 16, which the US Attorney General kind of has put forth those guidelines. And then phone-free schools to allow the kids to actually talk to each other at lunch and interact. And of course, 504s and IEPs are an exception to that particular rule. And then there's also the increased free play and increased independence, which is, there's a let grow movement that was mentioned as well within the toolkit. And so all of that, I think, again, ties into mental health. And so that in turn turns into what a student can do at school. So that'd be great if we could turn it into some questions.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a great idea to get the ball rolling. And then I think we need to kind of revisit it, whether it be through policy or, I don't know if MASC has like a boilerplate policy or if it would be something that would be through the school, the different schools, part of their handbooks. I have no idea, but I really would, I agree. I think we need to get the ball rolling on that. We've been talking about it for a long time and I appreciate your comments and everything you said. And I think a survey is a great, I agree, a great way to start and then.
The only thing I, I cautious is on, I, I am reminiscing of COVID right here because they're coming down with a policy. Hopefully by the end of this year, that they're going to say statewide, this is what we want to do. I think it's gone through the Senate or maybe the House, one of the two, but it's, it's there waiting. The governor is fully supporting this and wanting to make sure this is in play. I just don't want to be one of those districts that gets ahead of it like pre-COVID did and then we all had to readjust after we figured it out. So, you know, I know, I appreciate the work that you've done as well too. I think adding a question to the survey would be good to get parent input. And then let's just see what the governor's coming up with and saying as across the entire state. Because they're going to then put it out, here it is across the entire state, where we're, we're a policy.
Yeah.
MASC specifically doesn't have a model on cell phones particularly. Exactly. Because they're waiting, they're waiting to see what's going to happen.
Yeah. And I mean, that's why I think the discussion's good to start the discussion, like, you know, pro phone or against phones or whatever. Because, you know, as a parent that has a seventh grader and a third grader, I will do things differently with my third grader than I did with my seventh grader. You know, cut the sort of out of the bag at that point. So, you know, it would be nice, again, to put out what's there for parents to use as tools if they would like. And also it's, it's that community norms of, you know, I gave into pressure to get my daughter a phone in fifth grade in the spring because all her friends are on the phones and she was being left out socially. And of course, that's not what we want from our children. But then that's not always the case. There are, there are a lot of parents that are trying to hold out. So it's just some, you know, education again and discussion, awesome discussion.
Thanks, Jess.
It's a worthy topic.
Question?
No, I just said it's a worthy topic.
Okay. Budget and facilities, Megan?
So Aaron did a great job of discussing about, I'd say 75% of what we talked about. And then one thing, and we have Mr. Flornoy here. Oh, there is, sorry. So one of the things we talked about was, and we did it through the budget subcommittee because it could affect the budget, is the need for a new math curriculum at the elementary level. So Joey worked with Renee and a team of teachers. And they have been working for, I'd say, six months on this project where they reviewed all different curriculums. And then they had a rating system and then they finally decided on a new math curriculum called I-Ready. So high level, it's, it would be a three-year contract. I think it's like about $15,000 more expensive over the three years. So it's not hugely more expensive than the one we currently use. The one we currently use is called Sabas. And Joey has been so kind to bring all of these materials for us. What we talked about in the meeting is for each of us to take a piece home to look at so that the school committee, because we, we, obviously we're voting on the budget, but we're all supposed, supposed to be voting on new curriculum. So I think this is a great starting point on this where we can take it home. And one of the things we talked about is having time. So we'll have a month until our next meeting. So Joey, did you want to say anything? I don't want to.
Just so you know what you, you've got, I left one of these, grade one is the way they present it. I left it that way, but whoever takes that one, I didn't do it. The others, we have kindergarten, first grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, so whichever grade you feel comfortable with. It's all essentially the same material. I mean, it's the same format layout. So whichever one you want to take and look at or exchange. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me and I can answer any of those.
Can I just clarify a couple of things? Megan did a nice job of summarizing that. Joey as well too. So it, it's a program, right? I want to be clear. John Campbell is also instrumental in helping all this out as well too. So I want to make sure this, this is not a curriculum, it's a program, right? So it's a math program we're looking at. That's a tool for our teachers to use in the curriculum, right? For our, at our elementary level. So one of the things that we heard is that the, the tool that we're using now, the math program we're using now, time is coming to an end. We, we revisited, good for getting ahead of that, looking at that and seeing what exactly we're looking for in this next program that we're putting in place. So they, they've done some good work on that. It's roughly total, close to about $100,000 for the next three years. We're also hearing that there might be an influx in money over these next couple of months as well too. So we want to try to lock in as soon as we can as well too. We really want you guys to take a look at this. Again, school committee doesn't have the right to say what book we're putting in the library, small things here and there. But we're doing a curriculum, sorry, a program. We're doing it across the elementary school. And it's costing that much money. We want to make sure that it's put in front of the subcommittee meeting. Fits perfectly in the budget, subcommittee meeting and seeing that, yes, we can afford this money. Making sure that's in the budget and making sure this is a priority when we're starting the budget process as well too. Just one last thing, we underutilize our subcommittee meetings. This is exactly where it should be, right? Instead of Joey and John, who did a great job, almost an hour worth of presenting to us, right? We certainly, that's what subcommunities are for, right? Getting the information, getting the questions answered and bringing it back to Joey. And one of the things that came out was, I think the school committee would like to see this program, right? To have a chance to have their hands on it and take a look at it before they make a vote. We're giving you time so it's not like one month and say, hey, we need you to vote on this. We want you to take a look at this. So we underutilize our subcommittee meetings. I think this is a great spot to introduce it. And I think you guys will put in there on that as well.
Yeah, no, it was great. And the other thing is, I think, you know, we're trying to, I don't want to say condense these big meetings.
Yes, we are.
We want to be, okay, we're trying to condense. We want to be as productive as possible, right? We don't want to be spinning our wheels. So instead of asking a million questions sitting at this table where nobody has answers, I think this will give everyone the opportunity. And Al, is there a certain person that you want us to email our questions to?
So respectfully, say Joey, right? He's our math, he's our math coach, right? And John as well?
Yes.
Okay, sure. Absolutely.
All right.
And coffee, John.
Okay, perfect.
So and they did the three years because that will align with the high school program that's expiring and allow them to when they, in three years from now, to have the elementary and the high school have a more cohesive.
So yeah, we can do a three-year term with this company so that, as Beth said, the one we voted on, I don't know, do you guys remember, we voted on a high school, middle school one last year? I don't think we had, we didn't have, we weren't, did not have the opportunity to look at it. We, it was, do you remember that?
It was purchased prior.
Correct.
It didn't follow policy procedure. It was purchased prior.
It was purchased and. This is refreshing. Yes. So we have that one. I think we voted on that a year ago. Maybe it was two years ago. I can't remember.
This will feed into that one.
This one, it's, they said, they, they talked about how it's compatible and, but if we do go three-year with this one and then the one we already voted on was a five-year, Renee was mentioning the point that they will end at the same time. So then we can decide as a district, is it more cost effective to go with one? Because the one at Tohonto is different than this I-Ready.
That's right.
So then at that time, you know, whoever is in place can decide.
And Joey and John and Renee work with Francine, math department head at the high school, middle school. So that there'd be some, right? We don't have the Claris scope and sequence design, right? So what's it look like when you're transitioning from fifth grade to sixth grade? We don't have that place. We don't have it sometimes even at our elementary, like what exactly does it look like when a student's leaving third grade, going to fourth grade? Like, how is that all laid out? So that's the work we've been working on this year. We're also looking to see what that looks like when a student comes from either Berlins or Wolston and they're coming into the high school. Like, what does that look like? So we're trying to really get that all lined up. So as difficult it is sometimes for teachers, it's even harder for our students that learn one math program in the elementary school and a whole different math program at the high school. So now we're trying to get that all aligned. That's the work we're working on this year.
So, so Al, maybe you or John can answer this. You mentioned earlier, you got the MCAS results. You said we did really well in the math side, to the point where I think the district was recognized for math in some way?
Yep.
And there seems to be a lot of focus on changing the way we're doing math despite seemingly good results. What about on the other side, the ELA side?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we have one more, one more year on our ELA program that we have right now. So we, we want to get this math program done with. And we're also cautious, right? We didn't align it as well as it should be. This is a tough, tough lift for our teachers. They're going to be learning a new math program, right? And that's why we want you guys voting on it sooner than later so we can get some professional learning in for our teachers and get them a chance to look at this new math program across the district. And then we'll be getting ready to do a new ELA program. That's a lot to, it just didn't line itself up really well.
A lot of work.
It is a lot and it's a lot on our teachers, but the ELA program's coming to an end next year.
Why does this seem like such a focus on changing what you're doing in math when it seems like the results are good?
Yep.
But you're changing.
Yep.
So what's the, why?
There's some pieces in this new math program that we, we like that look a little bit more different on technology. But I'll defer to Joey. You want to jump in on this?
Yeah, I think part of it is because the program that we're using within with Sabas for 10 years now is sort of coming to an end. And one of the things we looked at, we looked at the new Sabas program.
I have an, can I just interrupt? You, you say coming to an end, like the company's coming to an end or our contract contract?
Contract.
So that program still will exist going forward?
That program, they have, well, they have an updated version of it. They updated the, the website. The physical materials are pretty much the same because that was one of the companies we looked at and made it to the final four. For us, the big thing was if we were going to change and leave Sabas, because that wasn't our primary goal, it was, we have to have a new contract. So we approached every program. If it was the same or less, why change? We didn't want to. We only looked at programs we thought were going to give us more than what we have. And part of that was, again, we had K through five represented. Once we narrowed it down to this program, we actually took it to the middle high school and met with their teachers. And they also, they, they appreciated that was more in line with what were they, they were doing. So I think for us, the big thing was we think we can get more than what we're getting. Another thing to consider was that a lot of these programs, no matter what program we choose, a lot of what's going to make the difference is the follow-through, what happens with implementation, what happens with the administrative follow-through, making sure these things are used with. making sure these things are used with efficacy. So I think we've got great teachers, no matter what program we give them, they're going to do good stuff with it. And I think we're just trying to give them a better tool to work with than what we've been using for the last ten years, so. That was sort of the reason. We, we had to make a decision, and we looked at all the options. Instead of just sort of staying with what we had, and this, we felt was stronger than what we currently have.
Thanks, Jess.
I have one other question, and it doesn't need to be answered. Someone had asked me, and I'm not in the teaching world, so this person was a teacher, and they asked if we pilot these curriculums in our school. So I don't, okay. I mean, that's just something...
They're charging them. There was a time when you would pilot a program and it was free. Now they charge.
They're charging us for the professional learning they're going to give our teachers to, to implement this. So we're negotiating that with them as we speak, with Renee, John, Joey. They, they, in the past, was free, right? They wanted, we're, we're the customers here. And they're giving us pretty steep costs, but we're giving the professional learning to our teachers. So we're, we're working with them on that, trying to lower that cost as well, too.
So we'll all grab those on our way out, but thank you, it was so great, thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
Any questions? Either way, fine.
I'll send Megan?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So next, Lori, on the superintendent search subcommittee, not to be confused, please, with these search screening committee, which is completely separate.
So our first meeting is tomorrow, October fifteenth, at six P M. It's a public meeting, it's a training. Tracy Novick will be running it. And it's just for the, the people that are on the superintendent search committee. People can come and watch, but it's not, the full committee is, is not required to be there. Then basically, the weekend of the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth will be given resumes to review. And on Monday, October twenty-seventh, will be our next meeting at six P M. And that will be our chair election. And then November third through the seventh, and those are all, they happen at Tejano. And then the third through the seventh will be meeting at central office and doing interviews. And following that will be school visits, people coming here. So we're on track, we're, Tracy has it all under control, she's doing a great job guiding us.
And tomorrow, this meeting is at six o'clock, right?
It's at six o'clock, it's here in this room.
I apologize, I, I sent out that agenda, and it didn't have the time on there, so we, it was brought to our attention. So we made that correction this morning. At first thing in the morning, I have that out there as our, a new agenda with the six o'clock start time. So I want to make sure publicly we get that out there as well. Thanks, Lori.
And we don't have any policies up tonight to discuss, so there's no update there. Okay, six fourteen, that brings us to our second public comment. Anyone like to make a new public comment on any of the business items on the agenda? No?
Yeah, one.
One, okay, one.
I guess it's just a switch. This isn't, this isn't working. Sorry, I was hoping I could ask some clarification questions before I ask my question, if that's all right.
Clarification about public comment?
So my, my two comments are going to be about MCAS as a graduation requirement.
Uh, yep, okay.
The pathways and technical opportunities. So I just wanted to know if you guys are going to discuss MCAS as a graduation requirement tonight?
It's off our first read, so we're not going to necessarily deliberate on it, but there might be some questions from the committee if they have any.
Okay, so I guess I was just wondering if you guys were going to decide whether you want to keep it or not? Or discuss whether you want to keep it or not?
It's not a vote, it's not a vote tonight, so no.
It's not a vote, but will the discussion be about whether you want to keep it or not?
There may not be much of a discussion, it's on there for first read, so it means that it's the first time we're seeing it. So we'll take it away, and we offer a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, and then, um, okay, I guess that clears it up for me. I just wanted to make some comments about, I know you guys decided last year to keep it because people had taken the test and it made sense for last year. But just, you know, knowing that the voters sort of voted to end the MCAS as a graduation requirement, I feel like that sends a strong message that, you know, not all of us agree that passing this standardized test is, you know, a full measure of their student's achievement. A lot of us believe strongly that like a more holistic, equitable, and comprehensive measure of student readiness and achievement is really the goal. So I, I hope you take that into consideration when you guys are discussing it. I feel like a lot of the Mid-Wanchooset schools have already decided not to have this as a graduation requirement, so, you know, that will be consistent with what other schools in our area are doing. I feel like it's very one-dimensional to have this test be the full measure of, you know, whether or not a student actually gets to graduate or not. You know, that's very indicative of how the voters voted. So I think that was my comments about the MCAS, hopefully I'll take that into consideration. As far as the pathways and the technical opportunities, I think I've been pretty vocal to date about this. I think I'm, I'm also on the strategic planning committee as well. And I hope that we can sort of come to, we can create some goals that will help students feel like they have a place at Tejano. I think a lot of what I've been hearing is that, you know, there are lots of kids that want to be here, but they don't necessarily feel like there's a path for them. And I think it's important that this group does some good work as far as opening up those opportunities for them. The pathways and the technical opportunities specifically for the Boylston kids. I know I've seen the policy that Lisa put out specifically for the communication about the opportunities, but I don't think it addresses the inequity that the Boylston students currently have versus what Berlino has. We need to do a lot more work around how, how we get those Boylston kids that opportunity, because it's very unfair, unbalanced at the moment. And I don't think a lot of parents understand that that won't be available for their kids. It's a big deal. So I think I just wanted to make sure that this is on top of everyone's radar. You guys are discussing it, we're talking to the towns about, you know, can Boylston contribute? Will Allison even accept those kinds of terms? Like, what are the other opportunities that we will work on in the meantime before we get this negotiated? I personally don't feel like we've made enough progress for those Boylston students, so I'm here, I'm being noisy for them, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Was that it? Yeah, one, yep, one.
I have someone else on some of those. Do I need the microphone?
Sure.
Hi, my name's Amanda Bear. My daughter, Madeline, bears in sixth grade. And this fall, you may remember, she was, um, she tried out for JV soccer, and so I'm just, and she made the team, and she's been allowed to play. So I'm just here to comment on the proposed policy. I just have two quick points. So the first is, the proposed policy, I think, is a major provision to how things have been at Tejano for decades. I mean, even when I was here, I played varsity soccer as an eighth grader, and there was no issue. And I think the fact that the proposed policy was not distributed to the public until around twelve P M. today is a little problematic because a lot of parents, and I know the coaches, have not had a chance to review the policy or weigh in on it. Second, I would just want to point out that the policy does not have any provision about what will happen with the current middle schoolers. I know, even for soccer, I know for other sports as well, there's a lot of middle schoolers who are already on JV and varsity and who are, you know, active members and contributing to the team. And I would hate to see their ability to stay on their team jeopardized in any way by this new policy. So I would hope the school committee would include some provision that kids who are currently on the teams would be grandfathered in. That's all.
Hey, just, just sign for us, thank you.
Perfect. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Last chance, anybody? Okay, so moving on to business items, could I please have a motion to approve the Mark Hidrich foundation donation to Unifat Sports?
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Megan? Questions or comments on this one? Okay, thank you very much. We have a, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Anyone against us? All right, so that motion passes?
Great question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Yes. We'll send out thank you notes and all that, just know that we'll work on that as well.
About a motion, please, for the V M S music supplies donation. I believe this is from the Link Group. Beth?
Second.
Lisa, questions about this?
So this is the eight, the Gmail document?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what that was attached to?
Yeah, there's some screenshots from, for invoices. I think there's some music stands and some other music-related donations.
A lot.
Yeah, what's that?
A lot of donate, a lot of equipment.
This is really good. I think they said they even got a bigger discount than they thought they were going to get, so they're able to get more. Okay, any other questions? All in favor of this one?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, that passes as well. The next one is, can I have a motion, please, to allow for Nature's Classroom? Uh, Jess?
Second.
Lori?
It was Beth, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Throwing my voice.
I said, I said that, I said it first, uh, sorry, we're bad, Beth, and...
Just so you got it. Chad, did you get it?
Yeah.
For the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, Al, this is for us to participate in Nature's Classroom?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on this one?
My only question is, um, are, will the MCAS be done?
Mr. Campbell, you want to, you want to join us up?
Sorry, John.
Man?
We're still friends, right?
We're still friends. Man, Nature's Classroom, Science and Technology. Section vote done by us for years.
So it's going to be a week, they get, like, the Monday they get back, are they rolling into MCAS, or?
Tuesday, usually.
Because it's Memorial Day weekend?
Right.
Are you saying that's what they've done the last three years?
Yeah, it's the same.
They've been doing it the same way?
They have been, yeah. I mean, we're talking about proving MCAS scores.
Be great.
What's that?
I know, he did great.
It was presented to us that, at least in Boylston Elementary, because I have a fifth-grade parent, that it would be in June. So I don't know. That's my only reservation, but you guys know best.
So I defer to, to John and, and Rob.
We can just, well, because that was timed.
You guys know best.
All right. We, it was tough when, uh, last year, when we tentatively picked dates, I had left that morning to pick up my son. And then I thought June would be great, but then looking at calendar, which also includes, you know, end-of-year trips and the celebrations, all of those things. So many activities we did for like first two weeks or two. So we talked about it, you questioned it back to, to me, and that's probably where it'll stay.
Is there any way they can move MCAS before that?
It's a crunch. It's a crunch, it's, um, so I'm happy, so ELA is way over. That's not, um, ELA is. Yeah, math, we can do right before, um, and they're fine, still that same routine. And the one that's a little different is Science and Technology.
Yeah.
Even that could be probably moved back off of a holiday day or two. The challenge is you want to leave a couple of days for makeups.
Yeah.
But let's also be clear, we, we're signed with Nature's Classroom, right? We are, these dates are locked in, like, they're, they're locked, they're locked.
Because the availability is...
Yeah, it's not like the hotel. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not a hotel, like, every other school is trying to work around MCAS as well, too. So just, I want to be clear about that. So we're locked in for next year, this year.
From the P N D R, a quick question, just to clarify, are we voting on, how long are we voting on fundraising?
That, that whole different conversation. We're voting on fundraising, not about the date, not about it, just about...
No, we did that, didn't we do that in the fall?
We have...
We did, uh, we went going in the direction of, of whether we're going at this time or not. That wasn't what this was a conversation about.
The motion wasn't for the date, the motion was for the whole program. It wasn't for the date, that was just Megan's question.
That's right. So that's not what this...
No, the motion was not for the date, but there's two separate things here. We usually approve overnight field trips as a school committee. I think we do approve Nature's Classroom every year. The second thing is, we have to approve, if schools want to fundraise, then that's a second vote. Is that what this vote is? Or is this for to approve the field trip? Because I don't think we voted on either.
Oh, no, I...
But you correct me if I'm wrong.
I mean, last year, we voted in the...
We voted in August last year.
Usually in the, in the spring, though.
So it was late, wait, two years ago, it was too late. And so, like, we started fundraising in January, which was way too late. And so that's why then, I think, last year, they hit the ground running in the fall and asking for fundraising permission.
We voted in August last year to start fundraising, and I think on the trip. Think they might have done the same thing in the same meeting, I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't specify, so I don't know why.
Doesn't matter, so we could technically do two, we could...
Al, what's the point of having this on, this particular document today?
This was on for fundraising. This is what we were talking about as principals, this is, we, we never talked about the dates. We were confirmed, we locked in on the dates.
It was, it was the dates, that was a question Megan had.
Sure.
It wasn't, it was a question of concern she had.
Yep.
So this is for fundraising?
This is approved fundraising that's going to be taking place to raise money for Nature's Classroom.
Let's just, let's just fix this here. I have an amendment to this motion, please, to approve this as approval for fundraising in Nature's Classroom.
So moved.
Jess?
amended.
Was that Jess?
So amended, yes, yes.
That's my dad.
And Lisa seconded, okay. All right, now, any questions on this?
So, but do we still need to vote to actually go on the field trip? It's an overnight field trip.
Yeah, I, I got to...
When the, when the tide comes, we usually would, yeah, yeah.
All right, so this is for fundraising, we have plenty of time to vote on it.
Because then it's like the bus costs and all that stuff.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so this is just for fundraising.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, original motion, any final questions? This is now for fundraising, all in favor of it?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, that motion passes.
Jen, can we go back and look at those minutes for, um, last year a little bit and see if we did vote on approving Nature's Classroom?
No, it was fundraising.
We voted on fundraising, but I think we voted on...
You think so?
You're right, in the spring, maybe we voted on, maybe we didn't, I don't know.
So can I just...
Usually overnight field trips, we have to vote on.
Overnight field trips are signed off by superintendent and signed off by the chair of the school committee.
Well, the school committee votes on it.
But you all voted on that, correct, as well, too? So we'll make sure on the next agenda that we, that if that's, we can't find that missing, we'll add that on to be able to vote to go on Nature's Classroom.
I thought that's what this was.
Voting takes that somebody?
We have to have a final vote on the final funds of fundraising.
I remember, I remember I was here for that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's like the week before the field trip.
That's right, the final.
Whatever the meeting is before that.
What, they're going to donate back to the school, then they'll say, can, because usually a random group of people will just go out and do fundraising. Do you know what I mean? So PPOs don't usually, it's so complicated.
No, it's not, yes, parents.
It's just to allow fundraising on behalf of the school.
Yeah, correct.
And then the school will donate the money back to whoever fundraises it, donating it back to the school.
So on the next agenda, we will put voting on nature's classroom. But please appreciate those, those dates are locked in right now for nature's classroom. I don't think there's any flexibility there, but we'll bring it in front of you guys to vote. I know John has led this for many years, and I thank you for doing that as well, too, but we'll definitely bring that up at the next.
Yeah.
But they said they can move the MCAS back maybe a day or two, so that we're not rolling off Memorial Day weekend after a week at nature's classroom, rolling into an MCAS.
That's not possible, that's not.
Yeah, I mean, you guys would ask, but I would just think.
It's, it's, MCAS is always not.
Yeah, I would just think that would top of our kids, be almost on a week of vacation and then come back and take MCAS.
Thank you. So, all right, at this point, you'll see on the agenda, we do have a specific item that needs to be hit at a specific time. That is six thirty, which is right now. Uh, this is because our attorney is available at six thirty and is not available at any other time. So we do have on the agenda that we may return to open session after the executive session to finish the open meeting, and we do have several items that we'll need to finish when we come back. So we're gonna now switch to our executive session. So could I have a motion, please, to enter executive session? And then return to open session. Executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, Purpose seven, to comply with or act under, that's my alarm for it, uh, to act under the authority of any general or special law, including the Massachusetts Public Records Law, Mass General Law Chapter sixty-six, Section ten, the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F and G, relating to continuing review of executive session minutes for meetings that occurred between January first, twenty twenty-four, and September second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Oh, second.
I heard Beth move and Lori second, uh, Megan?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna enter executive session, and, uh, we will return. If anyone wants to wait and hang out, we will let you know when we return to open session. Um, we've been going through regional school committee back to order seven fourteen PM. I think, uh, we'll kinda go over first and get this out of the way, what we just discussed. So still on the business items, could I please have a motion to authorize Attorney Sean Sweeney to make redactions in executive session minutes related to attorney-client privilege and other information exempt from disclosure under the public records law in connection with their release in relation to public records request, as discussed on the full committee and executive session on October fourteen, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Beth?
Second?
Lisa, all right. Questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Um. Roll call for Megan?
Aye.
Lori?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, that motion passes. Okay, uh, we left off, I think, with nature's classroom.
Yeah, we already voted on that.
Right, yeah, we left off there, right?
Yeah.
But I will bring for the next meeting, I'm sorry about that, the confusion about the, the date itself in front of school committee for the next meeting.
Uh, so next vote is, I have a motion to approve the career and technical education middle school pathways awareness policy.
Can I ask Lisa to join the table, join the table, please?
Could I have a motion for that first? Beth?
Second.
Uh, Jess, was that Jess?
Second.
Yeah, Jess, okay, uh, Lisa?
Um, so does anybody have any questions? I do. This is probably gonna be, so my question is, and I will admit, I don't fully grasp the understanding. I know a long time ago, Boylston didn't buy into the ASVAB. Correct. So their kids don't have guaranteed spots, whereas Berlin did. Correct. And so they have guaranteed spots. This might be an unpopular opinion, but is there any way that we could share those? So we have like fifteen spots. I don't know how many there are. Would we be able to use them district wide, so that Boylston, there's no way to do that?
No, the reason why is because it is funded by the towns. So it ha- a- actually has nothing to do with school committee. It actually has nothing to do with school committee.
Okay.
It has everything to do with the towns. So the town and the finance committee of each of the towns um, voted and, and bought into, so they, they actually, the towns have a separate line item for ASVAB. So Berlin has a separate funding line for ASVAB. Boylston does not, so.
And when I, when we go to present, uh, the Berlin, um, FinCon meetings, usually right in front of us is a superintendent from ASVAB presenting their budget as well, too.
Right, yeah, I understand.
And, and my understanding is, and I could be wrong, so please correct me, that Boylston was in initially, and then they, at one point along the ways, way back, said we're, we're not, we're not interested in that. So that's my understanding for ASVAB.
Right, and I think it is very much, uh, a reflection of, historically, there's been a flip-flopping of each town was more financially stable at certain segments in history. So at one time, like, Boylston was rich and Berlin was not, and then it flip-flopped, and it was like of ten, every ten years, it was like a flip-flop. And it has to do with, you know, revenue sources, how people look, how things are developing, you know, tax revenues, all kinds of different. But at the ti- at that moment in time, when they were, you know, deciding whether to opt in to ASVAB, they probably just couldn't fund it.
Right.
And I don't wanna get too specific, but there is opportunities for Boylston in particular, was like this past year, there was a spot that was open, um, because the towns that first had the first run of refusal said there was no one there to occupy that spot. Then they offered to us in, in Berlin-Boylston for a Boylston student. We, I then sent that over to Lisa in the guidance council, guidance councils, they say, okay, here's a spot, is anyone interested? And then they can capture it. But it has to be vetted to the people who are paying into it along the way first.
But I guess, um, so one last question, and then I promise we'll move on, cause I know everyone's waiting to talk about something else, but for these parents that are out here from Boylston trying to advocate for their kids to get vocational education, I, I can completely understand and empathize. So, and these parents are coming to us, maybe should they be trying to work with the select boards or the temp? Or, okay, so that's the avenue. Okay, all right.
Yep, absolutely. So, um, and so, so the, um, the CTE, the Career and Technical Education um, Middle School Pathway Exploration Policy that was presented to you, which I provided to you, that was identified, um, late in the, late in the summer, early in, um, September, actually, beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, all ascending districts. So because we're regional and Borough, we're considered ascending district because Berlin is co-op, is, you know, an affiliate with ASVAB, um, we have to have a document in place that identifies the middle school pathway exploration policy for Tohonto. And it documents how middle school students in the district are made aware and gain exposure to career and technical education schools and programs available to them in the district, um, regional agriculture and the other public, um, high schools. So this policy aligns with what is expected from us by, um, through the guidance from DESI. So essentially, I created a po- I looked at the guidance, created a policy that just reflected exactly what they needed. And then we need to pro, um, post this on our website, we have to send it out. Um, there are certain programs we have to run, which we do, we have ASVAB coming in. I, um, tomorrow, our eighth graders, all our eighth graders are invited to go on the field trip, um, over to ASVAB. ASVAB, um, provides the transportation to go over there, everybody can go over. Um, that's new this year, as recommended through this policy, it's always been available. So we've provided a lot of different opportunities. Um, this is just identifying for the public what those poli- what those, um, programs and opportunities are.
And, and this has all come about, because if you might have paid attention in the last, uh, few months or so, now vocational schools i- is by lottery now, right? So before it wasn't by lottery, right? You applied, you had to have certain credentials, you had to have certain grades, now it's by lottery. And so they, so they wanna make sure that we're giving this information out to every possible, so there's a little bit of backstory on that as well, too.
Should we be affording the same opportunity to, for Boylston ninth graders to go to ASVAB, to, with this group on the bus? Cause didn't you say that you had spoken to them before and that there's, there tends to be spots that open up for sophomore year, so maybe we should, when we're advertising this for our eighth graders, maybe we should actually be encouraging any Boylston ninth graders that would also be interested?
I, I, I don't, well, I'm, I don't feel comfortable sending ninth graders over with an eighth grade field trip. And that, like, that just gets naffed. If, if this is all, if this policy announces, all the eighth graders will have an opportunity. So, so every eighth grader, so as they move forward, everybody will have, have the opportunity. They will all have the opportunity to, uh, see and talk to the representative from ASVAB. Um, and now we're additionally providing an opportunity for, and there's seventeen students, a small group of students who elected not to go.
Not to go on the field trip?
Yep.
Because they know their pathway is not.
Right.
Technical.
Yeah, I think it's a free field trip.
But, I know.
Wild.
No, but it, it's, I was a little confused, like, that Boylston kids are allowed on the field.
Right. Yeah, um, because it, it is an opportu- it will, I mean, it will event, it could eventually be an opportunity for them. So it, it, I didn't feel, um, right about, you know, separating the opportunity. I think it's important.
The other thing is, there's some serious post-grad work that takes place at ASVAB, right? So students can graduate here from Tohonto and go, I mean, you go to any nightlife programs they're having there, that place is, is busy, I mean, they are at their full capacity.
Yeah.
Um, so giving kids the opportunity, let's say, I'm gonna graduate through the public schools, but maybe afterwards, my, my route is gonna be vocational and, and go through after graduating from Tohonto as well, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Two conferences ago, at the MASC, MASSS conference, they had, um, someone present from the Blackstone Collaborative.
Yeah.
And that was a really fascinating project, so that's something maybe that we could consider with surrounding towns, too.
Yeah, it's definitely worth exploring other opportunities, and I think that's something that, you know, we've even talked about, uh, at, in the strategic planning, kind of brainstorming, because it is, and you'll, all the research that's being conducted right now points to the fact that there are more students looking at, because of the price of college, because of so many different factors, that maybe they wanna go to two years and then, or they're just broadening their options.
And, and, and the, the technical probes have changed now, right? It's no longer, first of all, we need plumbers, electricians, we need carpenters, we need all them, cause anyone that's looking to find one. But we don't want them just to be, at the technical schools, not just become laborers, we want them to own their business, right? So we want them to be able to know how to do the bookkeeping, want them to know how to run a business. All of that part is, is the whole mindset that technical schools are now moving forward. That's why a lot of them aren't really called vocational, they're called technical high schools, um, is where they're leading towards.
I'm curious, is Job Corps also somewhere within options offered to kids, too?
Um, um, they're, they're mentioned, the, the Job Corps is mentioned, and then there are certain students that we will highlight, you know, certain programs specifically for certain students.
So again, we're fulfilling the requirements of putting this in front of you guys, the school committee, and putting this as a policy, and that's why we have a deadline by.
November first.
November first.
We have to, oh, I actually have an attestation, I mean, they literally gave us no time, said, we need this, and you have to do all of these things, and you have to get it signed, sealed, and delivered.
Kind of a.
Just want your quick turnaround.
All good?
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
So is this gonna be a policy like our other policies, like, come back?
I, it, it, that's an excellent question, because I, um, and a question I cannot answer, I do not know that. All I know is that it is some, it is an ex- so, the word policy is a very funny thing. Policy is very funny. So this is information that must go out about the programming around career and technical education, and it has to be posted and sent out, all of these things. I, it, I don't believe it's a policy that goes in the policy handbook.
Yeah, I believe MASC sent something out about that, uh, you have to do this, but specifically not to put it in the reference manual, it's, it lives at the school.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and Tracy clarified, she sent an email like clarifying it, cause it was.
Okay.
Yes.
See, and I used, so, and I didn't get it, see, and I don't get those memos, so, yes, thank you for clarifying that.
And, and we're, we, we need to be careful, cause I think we're using the word policy a lot, right?
Right.
And policies strictly have a place where they stand, right? So that's what the state's calling us, though, right? That's right, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, ready to vote? All's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, that motion passes, thank you.
Lisa wants to stay right up in the first, if you could.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Uh, yeah, okay, graduation requirements is next on the list as a first read, but does anybody have any questions, or Lisa, do you wanna tell us anything about?
Sure, um, cause I think this is confusing. So presented to you are two documents for a first read, and these are required by DESI, um, for submission. One is for competency determination, and one is for the graduation requirements. Last year, we found ourselves in the position of looking at these two areas due to the November vote to eliminate MCAS from the state competency determination and graduation requirements. The documents that I've submitted to you have been reviewed by a wide range of stakeholders, including school council, um, department chairs, staff, the curriculum coordinator, and administration to assert, to ensure they are aligned with the expectations of the state. Um, and there is a document that, um, this, um, that it has to align with the information in this document. So that it's aligned with that, and also it's in our handbook and program studies currently. So for competency determination, as described in new regulations, the CD represents two accomplishments. Showing a mastery of skills in ELA, math and science, and in two years, um, social studies. Set, um, and the satisfactory completion of relevant coursework aligned with the standards measured by the high school ELA, mathematics and science MCAS assessment administered in the twenty twenty-three MCAS. So competency determination is, are you, um, showing mastery of skills in these three areas, soon to be four areas, as shown by the twenty twenty-three MCAS? So I've outlined all of that in that document in a template in a way that is prescribed by DESI. Now, the local re- um, graduation requirements are at the sole discretion of the district and cover grades, um, up through twelve. Local graduation requirements may go beyond the requirements of CD policy to include, um, requirements related to credit earning, attendance, participation, and, um, extracurricular activities, et cetera. It's dependent on what, um, the school committee identifies. So currently, our graduation requirements include the passage of the MCAS in ELA, math, and uh, uh, and STE, or science, technology, and engineering, we've decided on biology, as voted, um, last year. Since that time, the local districts have reflected that there are currently, and this was mentioned, um, by Christina, that there, um, there are no districts who, um, worked with the midwatch group. Um, no groups will be using the MCAS as a local graduation requirement. Um, and members of the school council and our department chairs have agreed that MCAS should no longer be required as a local graduation requirement. As the state, this is important, as the state is still not clear on exactly how the test will be used, and the reduced number of makeup opportunities that are being, um, afforded to our students. So with that information available to you, do you have any questions, um, for this first read?
So the other thing I wanna stress is, we brought it to you last year, right? We, we wanted to have time to reflect on it. We wanted to have time to talk to our other colleagues around us, sort of like a snow day, we don't wanna be out there alone. As was brought up, we'd be the only ones. But we also believe that this is the right move at this time, so it's not going to be, need to pass the MCAS to graduate from, from Tohonto High School. We don't wanna water down the importance of still taking the MCAS, cause it is an important data point, and our students still need to be taking that test. So we can, we, we wanna still make sure through our parents and through our staff, the importance of that test. So we'll use that as a data point to go and reflect and say, what, what we need to make sure these kids are getting before they graduate from, from Tohonto High School. But it will not be a requirement to pass that to, to graduate from Tohonto High School.
Anybody with questions? All right, so first read, so we'll have more time next time to, uh, ask any questions if they come up. Okay, could I have a motion, please, to approve the proposed changes to the Tohonto Student Handbook?
So moved.
Beth?
Second.
Lori? Okay, Al, what do you have for us?
So for the Tohonto Student Handbook, I'm gonna ask Lisa to join us, and I'm also gonna ask Julie Lee if she can join us as well, too, cause I know there's a part about the athletic part that's in the handbook as well, too. So I'm gonna have Lisa start, and Julie will be, um, joining in as well, too.
So I think, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about that, um, first, and so we have been discussing this as, um, as a group, as a small group, and we know that there's still work to be done. Um, putting a policy, um, a clear policy for tryouts and to continue to do work, to get input from, um, the coaches and um, and other professionals is very important to us. Um, I think what we saw, um, in the previous, there was a very short line that said middle school students playing on a varsity team. And all is, all it says is, six, seventh, and eighth grade students are expected to try out for the middle school team. They may try out for the JV team if there isn't a middle school team, or are instructed to do so by the coach. Six and seventh grade students interested in participating in football are encouraged to participate in the local Pop Warner or AYF football team. So there was a lot of confusion and discussion, um, around tryouts and participation of middle school students. And, um, I think what is presented is more of a process putting in place, understanding that there is more work that needs to be done. And I think there's a lot of language in there that talks about parent and guardian notification and approval, and at the discretion of the coach, and, um, decisions about playing up are first made by the coach and approved by the athletic director and principal. So, um, but I'm going to let, um, Julie speak to this.
Okay, great. Um, all right, I wrote it all down because I thought we were going before executive session, so I wanted to keep it really brief, but I guess that's still a win. Um, all right, so I'm just gonna read right from this. So hello, everyone, I'll keep this brief. I do think I need to provide some information, so people have an understanding of how and why we hasn't had any team landed where we landed on the proposed language. I don't wanna have it back to you guys, but, uh, I want.
Yeah.
If you can, if you can do it there. I can stand.
I'll show you.
No, I'll just drive.
There's all rapid change back there.
Thank you. This is much better. Um, all right, what makes Tohonto unique in this league is that our middle and high school is under one building principle. And because of that, our middle school kids can play on high school level teams without an approved MIA waiver. Schools who do not have middle and high school under one building principle do not have middle school students playing on high school level teams unless they have applied for a middle level waiver. This is not our rule, this is an MIA rule. To qualify for consideration for a middle level waiver, voted on by the midwatch UCT ADs, myself included, and submitted to the MIA, two factors have to be met. The schools have to be two building principals, one for middle and one for high school. And the anticipated numbers on the JV teams have to be too low to fill a roster. And numbers have to show a steady decrease year to year, essentially justifying why we bring these middle school students up to play on high school teams. Um so people understand, we are not in the business of denying appropriate waivers, we want kids playing sports. That's why we do the job we do, we love sports, we love kids playing sports, that's why we're here. Um, once a waiver gets approved, the athlete who received the waiver can, however, now, this is included too, for MIA, only play at the lowest level high school team, so that would be freshman or junior. Um, this is the MIA process for the middle level waiver. While Tohonto does not have to do this because of the one building principle, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have a process for middle school students trying out for and selected to play on high school level teams. So I've taken some time and put into a spreadsheet all the twenty-seven schools in the midwatch UCT league, which ones are six to twelve, seven to twelve, eight to twelve and nine to twelve, of the schools that are similar to us, six to twelve. I've spoken with their ADs to see what their process is for middle school state students playing on high school teams. I have done extensive legwork on what other schools are doing, those in our divisions per sport and those outside our divisions but in our midwatch UCT league. Before we decide as a school to align with what schools in our league are doing, we think it's important, as Lisa said, to bring key players to the table, including, I would suggest, our coaches, I know some are here tonight. I would suggest a physical therapist who can speak to the body of these middle school athletes, a counselor who can speak to the social emotional piece, and MD, members of the admin team and parents to talk this out. I understand we are in a unique small school, but we have to have a process in place. The language in the current handbook in respect to middle school students playing on high school level teams is not particularly clear. It leaves room for too much interpretation. The proposed language you all received in the drive in respect to middle school students playing on high school level teams is not necessarily where I would like Tohonto to ultimately land, but I do think it's a good starting point. Because we have sports in action now and coaches need to know what's permitted in terms of rostering middle school players on high school teams, we have created a process that supports all athletes in our schools. We did not have that in the current current language and it's an important piece to have. We aren't saying that sixth graders can't play on JV teams. Right now, we are saying if you have enough kids to roster a JV team at your high school grades, you should not be looking to the sixth graders unless that athlete is physically, socially, emotionally ready for high school play. If a coach identifies an athlete that he or she feels meets this, the coach simply has to follow a process. We aren't saying eighth graders can't play varsity. Right now, we are saying there needs to be a process the coach has to follow, um if he or she wishes to have that middle school athlete play. This is what occurs, to be clear, in twenty-three schools in our league. A process for middle school kids playing on high school teams. We need to also have a process in place, so here is where we start. Um, I'm gonna tell you right now, this topic is a really hot topic within the MIA right now, it's called middle level waivers. ADs are being called upon to weigh in on what member schools want to do with this because the process is not the same for all our member schools. People under one building principle can have their middle schoolers play up. People that don't have one building principle have to go through a waiver process. And that waiver process is generally eighth grade, never sixth, eighth grade um or seventh grade. Um, so the discussions are beginning, which I think is a great thing in the association because it's good for the kids. Uh lastly, I do, I do think it's important to understand that no athlete is on a team until a coach has rostered his or her team. Um, that includes the student athlete. I just need to make it very clear that no student athlete is grandfather on any team. That's it.
Julie, thanks.
I know there was a lot there.
Yeah, so.
There was a lot.
There is a lot there, uh.
Yeah.
There's a lot of other proposed changes as well. So we have a current motion on the table to accept them all. So why don't we talk about this one here? Do you have got questions for Julie? Want any clarification or anything?
Can we put the document up on the.
Uh Joe, you put it up. Through that.
It's uh, it's one twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh it's the other one that just shows the changes.
All right, hold on. I turn Mike here.
Um, okay.
Third one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
Yeah.
Could have been grandfathered, but he said not allowed.
Jess, do you have a specific question on there for Julie?
Oh, I think Lisa's.
I was just asking, I was just asking, sorry, I was.
Yeah, so at, Lisa, you have.
I guess I was just wondering if there are kids who could have been grandfathered, but since that's not allowed, like how many kids does that affect?
It depends sport to sport. Um, so for the basketball team last year, the girls, typically this affects sadly the girls teams more than the boys because the numbers are dwindling more at the girls level than the boys. Um, so the girls JV basketball team last year had a lot of players pulled up from the middle school team to play. But now they're a grade higher, so it wouldn't necessarily even so much affect them because you're looking at these kids that mostly got pulled up last year, seven graders that played up, now they're eighth graders. So eighth grader's playing up on a JV field. If you don't have the numbers, you have to go down. What this is simply saying is, you know, kids want to play sports in our school. Um, and we don't, we don't want to have, we don't want to have kids that are able to play the sport being replaced by lower level middle schoolers.
Not to like say, not to kind of go off topic, but like Al had mentioned, maybe a curriculum subcommittee. I mean, I don't know if we want to look at all of our subcommittees or what. Maybe we, like we said, we'll wait and do that after the search is done, but.
Should we hold this until we redo subcommittee?
What?
Should we hold this until next month? Are we redoing subcommittees next month?
Next month is usually our organizational meeting, so we revoke chair, vice chair, all those, all the stuff. That'll be November tenth, it says November fifteenth on the, but I think it's November tenth, right?
Yeah, it's that.
Is it?
Tuesday.
Monday, November fifteenth, I think is like a Friday. I almost was gonna email you, but I'm like, oh, maybe we are meeting on a Friday. I couldn't remember because I didn't. November fifteenth is a Saturday. So I'm sure we're not.
Feels unlikely.
The tenth is a Monday, the eleventh is a holiday.
Well, let's make that clear right now that our next meeting is November tenth, uh so we don't get another meeting law violation.
Well, we can do a vote to just fix that or whatever, just to be safe. But we're in the middle of a vote right now, so or no, we we're just discussing. So whatever, I'm happy to do it if Lisa wants to work on it, we can bang it out, like I just have to get it done before February.
I mean, it could live under the Student Successive Technology Subcommittee as well. I mean, that has a broad umbrella too. So what if you're in a, that, you know, the makeup of all the subcommittees can change in November.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Lisa, do you want to do it or no?
I'll do it.
Okay. I'll make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to create a protocol subcommittee that will consist of Megan Grail and Lisa Mayer. And with the purpose of using notes done in our training session and creating written protocols strictly based on the notes. Because that's all it's gonna be is copying and pasting.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against?
Lisa Mayer's gonna be busy. Strategic planning back as well too, it's like.
All right. Uh, okay, we did the budget closeout. Uh, the last one is the MASC delegate representative, I have a motion to nominate Jess DeGruddy as the MASC delegate. As the MASC delegate representative for this coming uh MASC conference.
So moved.
Second.
For again. All right, any uh questions, comments on that?
Yeah, so if people should have received in the mail, the, and then on page twenty-five.
It's in the drive too, yeah.
Okay, okay, I think I sent it, but okay, so.
Can you vote on those next time?
So, no, Tracy, if I could just interrupt, sorry, I'm sorry, Jess. Tracy did recommend not voting on the individual uh things. Uh, and so this is what she said, she said, oftentimes they make changes on the floor at the conference. If we were to vote, we can vote, happy to vote on them if you want. But if we were to vote on them and they made a single change to a piece of punctuation, you would not be allowed to represent us on that one.
Hmm, so it's more of a discussion then of how.
So she recommended that everybody read through them. And if you have any strong feelings one way or another about them, get in touch with you before you go to the conference, is what she recommended.
Huh, okay. Because we do have the.
If I can advise, that's what most school committees are doing right now, right? Because.
We've never done this before.
They're changing, right? That like Mike said, which he said, they could change right in the floor. Because if you haven't been to one, and I think Jessica, you've been, they're they're literally running them and changing them, there could be verbiage that's changed. And then Jessica can't really vote on that because the verbiage changed and you're voting on. So if you feel really strongly about one or the other, give her your feedback and she can take that as she goes through.
I mean, because we have the November tenth meeting too. So if anyone feels strongly, we could always have a very short, brief.
And then you leave the twelfth?
The Wednesday, I think afternoon.
That is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
And naturally, it's Saturday, it'd have to look.
And do you, are you, you're not going?
I'm going to.
You are?
I'm going to, yeah.
It's a good conference.
I'm sure it is, it's just such a difficult time here.
It really is.
It's like two weeks before Thanksgiving, it's.
We got the professional morning day, the day before, it's like.
Veterans Day.
We have it all going on.
So that's the motion on the floor there.
Thank you, Jess.
We did make that motion, right, for seconded by Lori, I think. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay. Uh, we did our executive session, uh can I have a motion?
Oh wait, Mike, about the November.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now, yeah. Can I have a motion please to update the agenda as it incorrectly states our upcoming meeting is on November fifteenth, when it is in fact on November.
Tenth.
So moved.
Maggie?
Second.
Uh Jess, okay, anybody want to discuss or debate when the next meeting is?
Where is it written wrong, Mike, I'm sorry.
At the end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
Can we officially amend?
We can amend the agenda.
Agenda and post it in.
No, we can just amend it in the meeting.
No, no, I know, but just like on our Facebook page or whatever.
It's already on, it's on the calendar, it's November tenth, this was just a typo.
This is just a.
Yeah, it's a typo on the agenda.
That's all.
But, you know, we're spending a small fortune of gold on legal defense, so I guess.
Fifty-four hours of request for information that Jen and I are gonna be working on and Joe and everyone else, so we got work to do.
So uh, yeah, so that's the motion to make sure we have updated our meeting date to November tenth, everybody knows that.
Can we make sure the principals newsletters reflect that date?
Sure, yeah.
I think they do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, can I have a me- uh motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Agon?
Second.
Lisa, anyone want to discuss that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, John.
Thanks, everybody.